And thank you all for joining us. We'll stand and state, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Teri, if you could give us the administrative's report on agenda posting and notification of the meeting to the media.
Sure. The agenda was posted at Three Lakes School, Sugar Camp School, in the town of Sugar Camp, and via email, the town of Three Lakes, the town of Monaco, and at the Demer Library. And the media notified via email included Vilas County News, Northwoods River News, WRJO News, WXPR Radio, and WACD, WATK Radio.
All right, very good. Thank you for that. Any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Not from me.
Okay, all right.
I think the one that's on here is leftover from last month. The 5G, isn't that leftover from last month?
Oh, in the comments. I bet I didn't pull it.
5G?
That was from last month.
Okay.
Not last month, last meeting.
Oh, okay.
You mean the CEISA delegate?
No.
No. Just click on it.
Yes, that is a leftover on the agenda. Yeah, we can just remove, in the comments, we can just remove that. That's not on the posting, that's just what you see.
That's our recommended action. Oh, okay.
So the agenda we have is correct.
Correct.
So I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
One second.
All right, so motion by Stacy, second by Alicia. Any other questions, comments on the agenda tonight? All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard, motion passes five zero. Next we go to approving the minutes of the May 17th, 2023 regular meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Any questions or comments? I saw one. Okay, on the very last sentence, adjourn time. We came to open session at 6:20, but we adjourned at 6:05. And I don't know if I have notes.
I have it in email, Stacy.
I have, I wrote 6:02 that we moved to open, and then 6:05 we adjourned. So it's just a typo, it should be 6:02.
Okay, all right. Okay, so. All right, Josh, you made the motion?
No, Michelle made the motion.
Michelle.
I'll make the motion with the adjustment of the time from 6:20 to 6:02.
Okay.
Still second.
All right. All right, any other clarifications, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard, motion passes five zero. Next we will do hearing comments from visitors regarding agenda items. Would anybody wish to speak tonight?
Maybe A and B, maybe.
Okay, what would you, we can take your comments right now.
I want to just, can I just wait and see and hear what, do you need to say something now? Because I don't know, I mean, I heard the thingy for the A one already, so that all looks good. I'm just curious on B.
Okay.
And if I need to thank you or anything.
Yeah.
Because I never want to go without a thank you.
Well, let's see here. We look for the comments ahead of the agenda item, so. Nothing at this point, okay, all right. Okay, and next we go to administrative's report, NEXUS Visit and Update.
I just, I just wanted to give you an update so you are aware that NEXUS is working. They were here on May 16th, and they met with a core group that included principals, Dave Kirby, Jack Wales wasn't here, but I had his input, Jen West, who else am I missing? Kind of the food service, yep, Jill. Just to get an initial kickoff, and what we spent time on, it was kind of like, well, if you could dream big, you know, was kind of the premise. What are you thinking are areas that you need? So there was a lot of discussion by the principals, food service and such, to their specific areas, just wanted to start brainstorming ideas, you know, what's on people's minds. And it went really well. Of course, we didn't make any decisions, it's a very initial process. Now, in June, they're going to be coming back and re-interviewing, like, specific to the school, the principal of Sugar Camp, and the principal of the Junior High High School, and getting a little bit more drilled down. There will be a point where they, they will be asking you all what your thoughts are, where you see areas of need, trying to look not only in the immediate, but taking some much longer range plans. We spent some time talking about our facilities, our outdoor facilities. Again, wanting to remain fiscally responsible, however, we want to be attractive, you know, to the people who are looking to why pick Three Lakes, which we already know why, but, you know, we need to keep up, and we've done a great job. The feedback initially that was given to me, and I may have mentioned it at last message, or last meeting, was how complimentary they are as to what they've seen on our facilities already, noting that our buildings are older now, and that, you know, you would think there'd be a lot more, that might be more structural need, but the maintenance and the upkeep and the aesthetics are showing that it's been well-maintained, and we want to keep that going.
Okay, so we're expecting a revisit in June?
Yes, they're going to be doing some interviews, May 12th, or June 12th, and then June, the week, like, the 29th or 30th, so. They're in smaller groups, so I'll be giving you steady updates about where we're at. Oh, and another piece that I should mention is a staff survey went out this last week, or this week, I can't even remember what day it was, but about your immediate environment. Heat, cold, is it warm in the winter, or is it cold, is the lighting good? Just to get kind of your, you know, feet-on-the-ground feel. So they're putting that together for us, too.
Okay, all right. Okay, so this is basically a visit, an interview with staff, in terms of getting input from them?
Yes.
And? That's in June the 12th?
Well, that's with, like, the principals, this is not full staff, this is, like, principal to their building. After they get their information compiled in June, then they would be looking at in July to early August, wanting to start bringing together staff groups, you know, community groups. This is what we're learning, this is what the feedback has been.
Okay.
So it's all a process.
Okay, got it. All right, any other questions? All right, we'll move on to new business. 5A, consider approval of health insurance provider social security health plan.
Great, and so today we have a guest, this is Cory Palmer. He's our M3 representative, and Cory has been working with Caleb and I throughout this year. It feels like we've been working together a long time. We wanted to start early, but I've learned there's never soon enough, right, in insurance? So I asked him to come tonight, and we had an earlier meeting with the staff to give them, it was a little bit the cart before the horse, but we already have this scheduled, so Cory could be here for this meeting as well. And he's going to go through the plan for you with some information, and then we will speak to why this is what I'm recommending we go forward with, and he can answer, you know, some of the fiscal considerations, the benefit considerations, and why we've landed where we've landed. Okay?
Very good.
So with that, Cory, I think I'll let you take off, and then Caleb, I'm asking you to chime in with me as we need to do so, okay?
So I'll be walking through this packet here of information, but again, to Teri's point, M3, we are independent consultants, so what we do is we work with a lot of school districts in the area, and then we evaluate the health insurance annually, and then also our resource for both the administration and staff throughout the year. So not only help with placement of the insurance and the negotiations, but we're also helping from claims management problems issues that the staff may have as well throughout the year. So to Teri's point, her, Caleb, and I and our team have been working somewhat proactively this year, because we don't get the renewal information till usually two or three months ahead of the renewal date, which is September 1st for Three Lakes. So this year, we knew the claims had been up the past couple of years. We knew the claims were still up a little better this year, but we were anticipating a little higher renewal than in prior years. So this year, we went to market earlier this year to be able to get a bunch of proposals in place and test the market before we actually had the renewal from WCA in hand. And that's purely for a timeline standpoint. We didn't want to wait and then be so tight on the timeline that it was too hard to make any change to recommend. So I'm going to walk through kind of the results of that process and our recommendation after working with Teri and Caleb. So if you want to flip in two pages to the renewal review, this is just a quick historic look at the claims history for the district. So what we're looking at is the, basically the last two and a half years. Your plan runs from September 1st to August 31st each year. So when we go back all the way to September of 2020, and the plan year that ran through August 31st, 2021, the plan ran at 114% loss ratio. So what the loss ratio is basically saying is, for every dollar you paid in premium, the plan was paying out $1.14 back in claims and expenses. So again, the target that insurance companies want is really between that 85% and 93%, 92%, 93%, that's where they can keep their profit margins, keep them happy to run as they are. So when we start getting above that 92%, 93%, that's where we start seeing some larger inflationary increases on renewals going forward. So when you look at the past couple of years, had 114% in that 2021 year. The 21-22 school year was a little higher, at 119. And then when we look at the shortened year-to-date with claims through the end of February, it's been running a little better at about 93, but we know a lot of the claims hit towards the summer months and things like that, so we anticipate that, although running a little better than this time last year, we're still expecting that or by and north of that 100% loss ratio piece. So this is again, another reason that we started marketing the plan several months ago, to have some options in front of you before we actually had the renewal from the Group Health Trust. On the bottom there, this is where the Group Health Trust came in. They were asking for a 13% increase on cost over your current rates. So with your current enrollment on the plan today, that would annualize at about a $273,000 increase for the upcoming plan here. So again, a pretty substantial increase. So that's why, if you flip to the next page, here's where we did a comparison of your current plan versus the option that we're really recommending. So a couple of things to look at is, first of all, the big difference you're going to notice in this plan is the deductible. Deductible today is a $500 deductible for anyone who's on single coverage, and a $1,000 deductible for anyone on family coverage. Biggest change you're going to see between the plans is that with Security Health Plan, we're looking at increasing that deductible all the way up to $1,500 for single coverage, and $3,000 for family coverage. Now, we're going to get to a minute how we're going to build a reimbursement program on that, where the employees will still have the same deductible liability, but just for a core plan standpoint, that's one of the major differences that helped us in that premium piece that we're going to get to at the end here. Otherwise, once that deductible's met, they have no other expenses charged to medical claims as far as hospital stays, doctor bills, and things like that. The only expense they would continue to have after hitting the deductible would be for co-pays. So if you go to the doctor, if you go a couple pieces down where it says office visit, if you go to a traditional office visit, you're paying a $30 copay, and that's it. If you go to a specialist, so think dermatologist, something like that, you're paying a $60 copay, and that's, that's all they'll pay for that visit. Going down the sheet, for urgent care, there's a $100 copay, and then emergency room would be a $250 copay, plus any other billed expenses would count towards their deductible. Pharmacy, there are, is a copay structure, so there are going to be a list of drugs that are covered at no cost. It's kind of considered a preventive drug list of several types of different generics. Outside of that list, depending on the tier of the medication, there'd be either a $10, $30, or $60 copay. And then there's a small list of certain specialty medications that would have a $250 copay, but a lot of those, actually, the employees don't end up paying $250 because there are a lot of manufacturer assistance programs and coupons available for those programs. So that's how the copay structure would work there. Now, just going back to your current plan, we did have one error, because we had several drafts this presentation, and I apologize. The draft that we printed before today doesn't show the current prescription drug co-pays that you do have, so if you want to write those in where it says deductible and coinsurance under prescription drugs for today, you actually have the same tier structure where there are some drugs that are no cost, but then the other tiers would be $10, $40, $60, and $100. So not exactly the same, but pretty close to what the Security Health Plan would be looking at. The only other major difference you're going to see on this sheet is looking at maximum out-of-pocket. So you'll see the current plan right now has a maximum out-of-pocket of $1,500 for single coverage, $3,000 per family. What's not in here is that on the pharmacy co-pays, there's also an out-of-pocket maximum of an additional $3,000 or $6,000. So essentially, the out-of-pocket maximum today is equivalent to what Security Health Plan's offering at the $4,500 and $9,000. One thing to remember on that is, because the $4,500 and $9,000 are large amounts, and they cause concern if you look at them, that is only for copay accumulations. So when you think about hospital bills, when you think about deductibles and things like that, once you hit your deductible liability, which will remain at $500 and $1,000 for your staff, and we'll talk about how we get there in a second, the only way you could get to that $4,500 as a single employee, or $9,000 as a family, is if you add up a very large amount of co-pays for office visits, prescription fills, and those things. So typically, in the past, before healthcare reform, co-pays would just go on forever. With healthcare reform now, plans have to have a ceiling on everything, and that's why you see those large amount ceilings. But we've never had anyone get close to those ceilings, because that would be a lot of $10 and $30 type of co-pays to get to those type of levels. So just remember that someone's not going to go to the hospital, have a $50,000 claim, and end up paying $4,500 or $9,000 for their family to cover those expenses. They're still capped out on those expenses at the $500 or $1,000. We're only talking about copay expenses that continue after that deductible piece.
Quick question on that, is that, are those numbers, those maximum out-of pockets, are those aggregate, or is there, is there, does the single limit hit on a certain person and then be done?
Yes, so that's a great question, and the technical term is embedded deductible. And what that means is, to your point, let's say you're on a family plan, and one member of your family has significant claims. There is a embedded deductible, meaning that one person caps out at the $500, let's say, and it would take other family members to have claims to ever meet that $1,000 as a family. So one person can't have a big claim and fill the whole family deductible.
Okay, great.
So this is an embedded deductible?
Correct.
Okay.
So then, looking at the premiums on the bottom of that page, you'll notice we have the total monthly premium, so this is district plus employee contribution, total monthly cost. You'll see, just for example, looking at the employee coverage today, the current cost is $1,116.89 per month. The renewal plan with WCA, which was that 13% increase, that was asking for that to go up to $1,262. The Security Health Plan proposal, because we're using that higher deductible, it actually is going to be lower in premium than what you're paying today for both the employees and for the school district.
What's the number reference on rate, the 1519631?
That's, that's your current enrollment at those levels. So from a plan design aspect, it's going to feel very similar, not exactly the same. We're never going to be exactly the same, but it's going to be somewhat familiar to your employees. So the big question that we'll jump to next is, how are we managing this $1,500 and $3,000 deductible and getting the employees' liability to remain as the same? And that's, that's really the next page in the packet here.
Can I just interrupt one quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
Who is actually in the network?
So we'll cover that in a second, but that would be, it's Security Health Plans from your network, which is their broader access HMO coverage. So up here, you're looking at Marchfield Clinic, Aspiris, Theta Care, UW Health, the Mayo Facilities, several others, so it's, it's pretty comprehensive. But yeah, we'll spend some time on that in a minute to talk in a little bit more about that piece of it. But if you, if you flip to this HRA analysis page, this is where we talk about how we would manage it so that the employees still only have that $500 single coverage deductible and the $1,000 family. So we show the total deductible there, $1,500 single, $3,000 family. The employees would be responsible for the first $500 in that single coverage. Then if they were to meet that $500, the district would reimburse up to the next $1,000 to get to that full $1,500 deductible. On a family coverage, it works the same way, where the employee would be responsible for the first $1,000, just like today. And if they hit or exceed that $1,000 in deductible, that last $2,000 would be reimbursed by the district automatically through a third-party vendor. So we recommended that the district uses Diversified Benefit Services for the administrator of the reimbursement program. They're already working with the district on the Flexible Spending Account Plan, and they do a very good job of managing this reimbursement behind the scenes, and it's automatic. So employees aren't going to have to submit any forms for those reimbursements. Security Health Plan will send them directly to Diversified Benefit Services. Diversified Benefit Services will process that, and then if there's a district reimbursement, they will send that directly to the provider to pay that bill, and then the district will get a monthly bill saying, this is how much was reimbursed from your side of that reimbursement program, and the district will pay that bill each month. So the biggest hiccup that we've been talking to Caleb and Teri about is when you have this reimbursement strategy, it works very well, but as you can imagine, slows down the payment process. So now, not only does, let's just use Aspiris, for example, they send the bill through to Security Health Plan. Security Health Plan will process that bill, and then they will send it off to Diversified Benefit Services. Diversified Benefit Services processes that bill, then they pay the provider directly. So a lot of times what we see is, employees may get two bills before that whole process is completed. So the biggest education piece that we have to be upfront with employees on is, hold those bills, don't pay them right away, wait till this process goes through. You can monitor it all online through you, and each employee will have their own Diversified Benefit Services account that they can monitor that. But the hardest thing is just saying, just hold on to that bill. If a provider's sending, you know, saying, you know, you're concerned about it, you can always call them and say, we have a reimbursement program, it will be coming to you. Usually, they're fine, and they'll just kick it off another 30 days as providers. But that's going to be the most difficult part for employees to remember and to get used to, is the timeline of these payments. Otherwise, we see it working very smoothly throughout the system. So that's really what we would do, and the reason we do this is, gets us to next page, because financially, the long, the short story of this page is that when the district purchases that higher deductible plan, there's such a significant premium savings that it covers the cost of these reimbursements through this HRA program, so that it's cheaper overall to have this higher deductible plan option, but reimburse it so that the employees don't take the hit of that higher deductible and still come out ahead on the overall financials for the year. So I'll walk through this, this page here, just to give you an idea of how we run that analysis. So we run it four different ways. So you'll see the first highlight has 25%, 50%, 75%, and 100%. What that's showing is, we know statistically that a good portion of your employees and their members are not going to exceed even their $500 or $1,000 level. You're always going to have a handful that do, and that's okay, but we know a big majority of them won't ever exceed $500,000, so that the district's not going to have to reimburse anything on those individuals and those families. So what these numbers are showing, these percentages, is running scenarios on, okay, let's say 25% of the district's total liability is used versus 50%, or 75%, versus max funds are reimbursed by the district. How does that look at the financials? The next line down, this is looking at the current, the renewal plan, at your current plan. So if you made no changes and accepted the 13%, the district would pay in about $2.15 million in premium. Moving to the plan with Security Health Plan that we're recommending brings the total premium cost down to about $2 million. Next, there is a cost to have Diversified Benefit Services run the administration of your reimbursement program. That's roughly $5,000 a year to have them administer that, so we add that cost in. Next sign down is the amount of reimbursement that would be projected at 25%, 50%, 75%, and 100%. So depending on how much claims are reimbursed by the district, that's where we get into what the total plan cost would be at those different levels. So I would recommend you look at the 50%. We would, we would anticipate you guys being probably in that 50% category, maybe a little less, but 50% is a good benchmark to look at as far as projected cost. So when you look at that category, you look at the $2,690,000 number. When you compare that to what the renewal cost would have been, at $2.15 million, that's where we see on the bottom there. If you did the new plan, as we laid it out here, with the reimbursement strategy, and the district had realized 50% of that reimbursement liability, the net savings would still be about $78,000 to the district overtaking the current renewal option at the 13% increase. So again, this way is a way where you're getting employees as close to what they have today as we can get, but it's also, if there's HRA strategy, we're saving, you know, I would say probably right around $80,000 versus renewing at the current plan that was offered by the Group Health Trust. Stop and let you guys ask questions, because that's a lot of area.
Diversified benefits, I would assume the employees will have an account so they can keep track of their deductibles and such?
Yep, they would be, they would have their own secured login and password to view it at any time. And for those that are using it, using them for their flex plan today, it's the same login, they'd just be able to click, do I want to look at my flex plan, or I don't want to look at my reimbursement plan? So they'd be able to toggle between the two on the same website. So they'd be able to toggle between the two on the same website that they're already using.
Does this require HSA accounts?
No, this cannot be used in conjunction with health savings accounts. If you have an HRA, you cannot have an HSA. And that did come up in the employee meetings. Some people asked, you know, why not the HSA route versus the HRA route? Couple differences there. One of the big components was when you have an HSA-style health plan, you can't have any co-pays. So for people that are really healthy without any prescriptions and things like that, that can be great, they love that. For people that have a lot of prescription costs, that copay protection on pharmacy fills is a really big deal. So that's why we see a lot of school districts still using the HRA model versus an HSA model. So that's one of the big reasons on using HRA. And the other piece is, from a purely financial standpoint, if you do an HSA contribution, that's a fixed cost, no matter if employees, you know, use it that year or not. With the HRA, if you guys have a really healthy year and there's just not a lot of liability paid out through that program, and let's say you have more of a 25%, the district has more funds that they didn't pay out that they can use towards other expenses and, you know, other ways that they may need for salaries and things like that. So that's why we see the HRA as being really popular with school districts.
Thank you.
So next couple pages are just a little bit of information on security health plan. So security health plan has been a pretty large carrier in this market for quite a while. Some of your employees are probably used to them from other stops they may have had along their work journey. But they do a very good job. They have access to most of the major players in the state, not everyone, but most of the majors that we see, Marshfield Clinic, Aspiris, UW, Mayo, some of those. So very good coverage. When you have someone living out of the state, they also cover, they have national coverage for those non-very dependents. So let's say you have an employee who has a 20-year-old college student going to school in Iowa or Minnesota or something like that. They would have access to this large RAP network throughout the country where they're going to be able to get in-network care wherever they're living outside of the state. So again, it provides that access. And when you remember, if you're traveling or one of your employees are traveling, if it's an emergency service, it doesn't matter where it is. A true emergency service is always going to be covered at 100% as an in-network cost. So people don't have to worry about if I'm on vacation on spring break, I'm in Florida and someone breaks a leg, take them in and near hospital. It's going to be covered as an in-network expense because it's an emergency event. Couple other programs that they have. One thing that's pretty unique to security health plan is they have this over-the-counter drug service program. So essentially what happens is each subscriber, so each employee who's enrolled in the plan, every quarter, they can go onto security health plan's website and essentially buy $30 worth of supplies or materials. So think, you know, they have a list of things, but ibuprofen, Band-Aids, gauze pads, anything like that, they can purchase up to $30 worth, paid 100% by security. If they want to buy more things, they can, and they just pay anything over $30. But every quarter, they can go in there and use that. So it's essentially $120 a year that they can use just towards, you know, any over-the-counter type of medications and supplies. And then virtual care, so CareMyWay is available for employees. So if they want to just set up a virtual visit with a doctor, whether it's over the phone, they can do that. They can treat and diagnose certain conditions. So, you know, common things, colds, allergies, pink eye, sinus infections, things like that, where they can talk through it, diagnose it, and then they can send in prescriptions too. So it's a really low-cost way to get a prescription sent into your pharmacy. And what I, what people are usually using it for is those after-hours type of things. Got home from school, kid was complaining about an ear infection. We've had it before, we don't want to go into urgent care, ER, or wait till the morning. You can do a virtual care visit, they can send a prescription through, you can pick it up that night or right away the next morning. So again, it's just a very nice convenience factor for employees that want to avoid, you know, higher urgent care type of expenses. And then there's also a 24-hour nurse line that they can call. Anytime, day or night, they can get a nurse team, and it's something where they can talk through, is this situation where it's an emergency and I need to go in right away? Is it something that can wait till morning? And at least they can talk to nurses to get that opinion and information out there to them. As far as things like preventive care, preventive care is still going to be covered at 100% with security health plan. So if you go in for things like your annual physicals, well-child immunizations, those type of things are still covered at 100%. You know, you're going to have your mammograms covered at no cost once per year. Colonoscopy are covered every two years. So all those type of things would still be covered at no cost through the preventive services program. The things I didn't mention, Terry, I'm not sure if there's something I missed?
I think you did a really good job, actually. Yes, I think we get it all. Caleb, can you think of anything? And there will be change. I mean, it's, if you're like me, when I get a bill, I like to pay it. And, you know, one of the education pieces that Cory and I and Caleb have talked about is, you don't want to jump too fast, knowing that you've got the second part of this processing happening because, as Cory shared with me, it's real easy to pay the provider, but it's not so easy to get it back. And then they start, you know, having those discussions. So that's an education piece. And Cory's going to come at the beginning of, or at the end of August during our in-service. Being that we're a 9-1 renewal, like I said, it feels like it's late in the game because the year's wrapping up, but we're actually really at the beginning. And we want to get that patient, that staff education component into place. And the first year, there'll be a few bumps and bruises as we're going through and figuring it out. But it definitely, in my opinion, and this is why I'm so strongly recommending it, is about as close as we can get to what we have with a reasonable cost savings, knowing that a 500, $1,000 deductible is just about unheard of this day and age. And our benefits, as I mentioned, to staff today, our insurance benefits as well as our salaries, which are, you know, not in the middle, they are on the upper end, and we have pride in maintaining that. We want to be a desirable place to attract the best and to keep the best. And so that was all calculated and considered too. I also was very vocal about, if you go to a plan where you do not have the deductibles, that's really a hard thing to digest if you walk in. And I think of, I brought you the example of like ADHD medication. Not every kid can take like Ritalin, you know, or Adderall, which is a cheaper medication. If you have to do a Vibance, you're walking in and you're looking at $250. Now, that's a monthly bill, that's a pretty big chunk, you know, to try to be processing. So I think by having that copay part with our prescriptions and that copay with our office visits, even though it's a step up, that's something you can plan for. And hopefully not, it's not going to really disrupt your budget like some of these other things could potentially do. So that's where I fell on that. I keep asking Caleb too, because, I mean, he's got a lot of experience with this, which is wonderful. I always bring it to the point that this is my insurance too. I'm not looking to, you know, to make it so difficult for us because we all are relying on this. This is something that we very much need to take care of ourselves. So it's not like I'm just going to slash costs, we've got to save district money. But that should always be a part of the equation when we're making these decisions. So do you have any questions for me specifically? How many plans did we look at when we were starting?
Looks like at least seven.
Oh, it went much-
There were more than seven.
There was way more than seven.
Multiple carriers. You know, it's getting hard. I mean, in reality, we are losing options within the school district health insurance space. With WEA closing up last year, they're no longer around. Humana just shut down all of the Wisconsin operations, so Humana's not an option. And Anthem, which is Blue Cross Blue Shield, they came and said they're not doing any new school business in 2023. So it's getting harder in the school district space to find good carriers at good prices. So we were pretty happy that security health plan. I've been talking to security health plan kind of loosely for a little over a year. On your plan, this is one where they've been interested in Three Lakes School District. And, you know, part of the reason is you've been with the Wisconsin County Association for so long, which is a great thing. But when they had the opportunity to really put a proposal off your business, they knew they had to put a good proposal out there too. So they're excited for the opportunity if they're to win that business too, to do a good job as well, so.
Is there a reason why everybody's backing out of school districts in Wisconsin?
Loss rates have been tough, just in general. It's been tougher. And part of that is because school districts have much more rich benefits, which a lot of times drives higher utilization of claims. You know, it's pretty easy to understand, you know, when we took a look at school districts and you're averaging about 1,000 to 1,500 deductible typically, when you compare that to the rest of the world outside of school district space right now, we're getting, our average deductible is 3,000, single, 6,000, family. It's a whole different thought process. And you don't want people to be avoiding care because they're afraid of deductible expense, but it does change a lot of those loss ratios out there that we're seeing. So school districts in general just seem to run a lot higher than what we're seeing. And we had a good run, but we're even seeing some of the larger districts in the state get pretty significant increases this year that were unheard of even five years ago. One of the largest districts in, you know, this market up here, you know, had a 17%, which is a drastic change from what they've seen in prior years. So there's some districts that have to make some pretty catastrophic changes to make sure they're in line with budgets too. So overall, Three Lakes is in a really good position with still having to offer that low of a deductible liability with the premiums that you have in place.
Deductible wise in comparison to other districts, is it similar?
No, you're lower. Most have crept up the deductibles. So I would say normally we're seeing, I would say 1,000 to 1,500 from a single and probably double that for a family. So we have seen that creeping up over time. Districts are trying to hold on as long as they can, but you guys are definitely on the lower end of that benchmark.
Is dental and vision included in this, is that separate?
That's separate.
Okay.
And we haven't seen a rate increase in the last two years. It's stayed steady. So we're hoping.
Any further questions? Someone prepared to make a motion?
Make a motion to accept the security health plan proposal for the HRA plan as presented.
Second.
Okay, this is for the start of the 2023, 2024 year. Okay, all right. All right, so a motion by Josh and a second by Michelle. Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll call it to a vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5 to 0. Very good. Cory, I look forward to working with you.
Sounds good.
Thank you for your 0x2.
Yes.
You're welcome. And like Terry said, we'll be back here in August, and we'll probably bring representatives from diversified benefit services and security health plan. So if people have very specific detailed questions, we'll have them on hand for those questions as well, too, so.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next we go to consider approval of salaries and contracts for district staff, including extracurricular and busing contracts for the 2023 through 2024 school year.
All right, and I did include in your information where I landed on this, did all the comparables. Caleb has a really nice network system. And we did look at our neighbors because there was some rather hefty raises given. We want to stay in line, but we wanted to also be able, we have to afford what we can afford. The county was one of that, they went up to 8%. Rylander, of course, you know, between the last two years, they've been at over 14%. But I would remind you that Rylander was significantly below the bar. So we don't want to get caught up in, well, they got a 14%. Well, it's still, you know, it all equates. Eagle River came in at about a 5% flat. Just about everybody I talked to who has more competitive wages, like in Northland Pines or some of the districts I've talked to, they were coming in anywhere from the 2.5, somewhere as high as 6. But in our area and with similar tariff schedule, it was really between 3.5 and 5.5. My goal in working with Caleb was to try to get at a 4% increase, knowing that we've historically budgeted for about a 2.5 to 3% increase if, as we've gone through. I also remind the board that Three Lakes has been diligent in when other districts have froze or done nothing, they have tried to maintain that expected level. And that was part, I think, of a historical of, yes, it's not a certified union, but there is good communication. We want to take care of our employees who take care of our kids and families. So I just throw that out there as a reminder because I have heard multiple times from our teaching staff and others, it is appreciated and it is recognized. When we got done doing the figures, what I came in on is we could do the 4% based on where we were landing with the insurance. Actually, we could go to the 5%, but, you know, you're losing wiggle room and stuff. And I really reevaluated the schedule, our salary schedule step in lane, which is a rarity yet. Other districts too, they may have what looks like a big bump up, more so than we do. But you're sometimes stuck there for three, four, five indefinite years. So we have the system, of course, where you get, you actually get a raise by your longevity of being here, which is really nice for attracting and keeping our younger staff. As you know, I've worked really hard that we are hiring the best and the brightest, and we want to keep those same best and the brightest who have been or back in the district. So what I came up with is, we could do a 5% thanks to Caleb. However, it's not a straight 5% across the board for professional staff. Really wanted to look at the lower end and the upper end. And by doing what's called pooled, it made it come out to their very highest employee still receive over a 4% increase. I think it was a 4.14.
Yeah, 4.1.
Yes, so they have the higher end. The brand-new teacher, they have about almost a 6% increase, okay? But that's the two ends of the spectrum. The middle then falls right at that 5%. And what it does is it gives the same compensation, right Caleb? That everybody's going to get the same amount this year, 3,400.
$488.49.
Per?
Professional staff.
Yes. So everybody gets the same, and that is a very nice increase when you're talking the difference between 4% and 5%. I mean, it, we did all the comparables and stuff, and we felt where it brought our scale to, as you can see, our starting teacher, we will be probably one of the only ones who can say that you're looking at a $49,000, which it should be with their expenses and to be competitive and to live in the Northwoods and know that we're there. And yet, we want to make sure that we are respecting and valuing our most veteran staff. I can tell you this, the numbers I compared to on this plan, our veteran staff who are topped out are still at $8,000 higher than Rylander and more so where they're coming out because those scales are ending generally around 79,500 max. Very few hit $80,000. So I felt like this was my recommendation- So I felt like this was my recommendation to make sure all are given, all are valued. This does not mean that it will be this way next year. You know, we, we have a budget, we have a plan, we have done some phenomenal savings the last few years, keeping costs lower, but this was where we are in the cycle that we could do this at this point in time. So with that, I open it up to questions for you guys. Are you laughing at me?
Nope.
So the pooling approach, we, we had, we, we've done that in the past, where we were looking to, and we've eliminated a lot of the bottom steps that we've had in the past too, because at one time we were looking, starting teachers off at sub forty. And, you know, you're coming out of college, many of them with debt, and it just, how do you compete also with the private sector? And you want to encourage people to go into the teaching profession and, and then, you know, be able to come out and, and pay your, your, your bills. So we've eliminated steps, we've done the pooling and, and I guess what that's done is, is help bring up that initial, you know, new teacher salary, which, I mean, it's, it was way too low. And we're, we're getting to the point where I think it's, it's, it's a lot more attractive than what it was once. And so that's important. And we also need to keep up also our attraction. I mean, you've noted when you've had to do hiring, that I've, I've seen some districts on TV state that, you know, we've got three or four applicants and, and many times you get.
Yeah.
Two or three times at a moment.
This is the first, our English position is, this is the first one, we're struggling to have applicants, but we're all going to make a group effort to try to get people to take notice.
Yeah.
But you are right, otherwise, I'm even significantly more than the average. So we have had nice pools to look at when we've been hiring.
Yeah. So, you know, it's a decision we made years ago as a district to try to maintain that position. And because if, if, if we want to be a leader, we have to basically attract people and in order to attract them, you have to be willing to, to pay above average in the salaries. So, so that's a little bit of a historical perspective on that and, and how we got to where we are today. So inflation, I guess, no doubt, this is affected by inflation like so many other districts over the past two years. Last year, we did a just under five percent rate.
Four point seven.
Four seven. Okay.
And that was across the board.
Yeah.
And this, I'm referring to professional staff only with the pooling.
Correct. Yeah. And also your comment too, as far as not many districts having the Stepman Lane's schedule. Again, just historical, you know, and again, things can always change, but we, we did look at, at different structures, different programs, different methods of, of basically, you know, how districts come to a certain place for a teacher, you know, and then some of them have gone the, the route by looking at scores, you know, within individual classrooms and such like that, you know, how well they teach. And, and, and we looked at those things and, and some districts followed that path. And the challenge with that is, is it changes from year to year largely because of the classroom population that comes in. That is a big factor in, in, in changing in test scores. And then it's like, all right, so what are you trying to evaluate? What part of that score, I guess, are you deeming important? And, 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 and in some factors, in some sectors, I should say, in, in, in the salary world, or especially in any production, you can assess those things pretty easily by, you know, attributing, you know, so much value per piece that a person individually does. A little more difficult here because a lot of it is subjective in terms of how you evaluate that. And so what we're, what we have here is a schedule that looks at longevity and also a person's willingness to continue in their education. And, and, and then have a rigorous evaluation.
Correct.
So, you know, the teacher gets the support that they need for using, I guess, where they, they need in terms of additional education and to help them become a better teacher, presenter in the classroom. So that's another big key into making this whole thing work. So in front of us here, we have a recommendation from Terry. And anybody have any other additional questions on it?
In this case, we're looking at both though, so.
Yeah, this.
The five percent for the support staff as well.
We'll do that separate. We'll make two separate motions.
Second include extracurricular as well?
Mm-hmm. Okay. So I would like to have the, do I not have that there?
Yeah, you did.
Okay. I think it's just much cleaner to have them separate.
Yep, oh yeah, definitely. I'll make the motion to approve the professional contracts at five percent pooled as presented.
Second.
All right, so a motion by Josh, second by Michelle. Any further questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes five to zero. Now we need additional motion for support. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the support staff and bus contractors at the five percent as presented.
Second.
And extracurricular, sorry. Make a motion to approve support staff, bus contractors and extracurricular at five percent as presented.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion on the table and a second. Any further questions?
I guess with that, how come you didn't look at a pooled type increase there either?
That's a great question. It was just, Caleb, you want to go for it?
It just, it just doesn't work because our, our support staff is just such a varied levels salary wise.
Sure.
That our, our higher earners.
Too tough, too tough.
There's just too much of a variance. The lows came up way too high and the highs didn't get much at all.
Sure.
And I can show you those numbers if you want to see them.
No, I kind of figured that's what you were going to say, but I just, I guess more I wanted to make sure it was at least looked into.
Yep.
All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes five to zero. There we go. Thank you Caleb and Terry for coming up with the proposal and working together with our staff, so. Here we go.
Thank you.
Is that a thank you or a?
It's a thank you. Trying to follow the numbers. It's a little difficult. But thank you, we do appreciate, we appreciate working with the board, with you guys, with the administrative, with, you know, everybody across the board. I'm a big happy family, we like it. We like it.
Very good. All right, go on to five C, consider appointment CISA delegate and alternate.
Okay, we found some information out, there was a few questions asked last time. We do need to, if we're going to appoint a delegate, do it at this meeting because there are some timelines, as Keri found out for us. And I did a little bit of follow-up and I'm going to have Keri share too, that really this person is responsible for one meeting and that would be the August seventh meeting. Monday, August seventh would be when you would need to be represent, a representative there. However, we don't have to actually have somebody there, we just wouldn't have a vote then on their business that they're conducting at that time. We do not have a position up for Board of Control, that's what the captain used to be, he was on Board of Control and that's why he went to the monthly meetings. That position has been since filled by a different member from a different district. So that's not up, that could open up again and then Three Lakes would be eligible. But at this point, we're looking for somebody to attend the August seventh meeting. And the other question that got answered is if you'd ever be interested in being on Board of Control, yes, zooming in is acceptable. And they have a pretty Zoom attendance in January, February, March. I suspect that's vacation time.
Sure.
So, and then Keri, did you want to share what Hannah shared with you?
Hannah at CISA nine, she said that delegates and alternates do not have to attend the convention unless you're interested in running for a seat. If attending the convention and the delegate does not run or get elected, attendance at the regular Board of Control meetings is not required. It's basically, you have to do it per, per state statute, we have to name somebody just so that there's someone on the books. And our deadline to get that in, I believe, is July, is it July one? Or is it June? It might even be today.
I thought it was June.
Yeah, tomorrow.
Something.
Tomorrow.
Oh.
Yep. So there is a deadline because they need the name to be able to put it in the program for the August seventh convention.
Well, we can't table this one again.
Unless somebody else wants to do it, I mean, I'm willing to, I'm willing to be the delegate. Likely, I can try for the August seventh. I don't know if I can, I don't know if I can make it, so, you know, it'd be nice to have an alternate, if somebody is willing to do that.
Because currently you have been the alternate.
Correct.
I was also interested, however, I cannot make the August seventh. Unless it's electronic. Because I think it's a weekday.
And I would be willing to be the alternate and attend the August seventh meeting if that would help one of you.
What a team.
Yeah, cool. I think that's about the only way that we're going to be able to really make this work. I mean, all of us are spread thin enough, but.
Because I haven't made my summer plans yet, so I suppose I can make them.
It's a, it's a Monday.
Right.
Do you think, or is it a Sunday?
It's a Monday.
It's a Monday. I thought it was Monday.
They're generally at.
Evening.
In the evening, I think it was.
Six.
Six o'clock.
I think it's six.
It doesn't say.
Is it six or seven?
It will begin at seven PM in the conference room of the CISA nine office in the city town on August seventh.
August seventh at seven o'clock. At CISA nine, CISA.
Okay, so Josh, you were the first one to step forward, it's just, just speaking up, so. And then Stacy, alternate? Because you can be there, Alicia, you cannot be at that.
I could attend electronic, but I cannot be there in person.
Okay. Okay.
And Alicia, if it's something where you want to be the delegate and Stacy the alternate, that is perfectly fine too. That's, I was just, just opening it up that if nobody wanted to do it, I'd be.
Can we draw mints?
I hope my wife, I hope Kelly is not watching.
Oh yeah.
Oh boy.
Yeah. Any further thoughts, Alicia?
I'm fine and supportive of anything. It doesn't seem like, I was just going kind of through the statute and what is required and really, it's just that we have an assigned delegate, I'm willing to do that. I just would like to take a little bit more into looking at the statute, it's just that we have someone.
You know, knowing, knowing that the captain was, I don't even know how much he went the last year and a half.
No.
I don't think he really did, he might have went to one.
Yeah, he wasn't able to.
But again, it was just the delegate on the books.
Mm-hmm.
Ready? I'm good at you, Josh.
I.
If, if.
Yeah, I'm really indifferent to myself as well. What are the normal meetings? Are they usually Mondays as well?
I don't.
They have been in the past.
I feel like they were.
Yeah. I think it's first Monday of the month, is what I remember, so.
Wish I could get me into some. Alicia, I would say if you're, if you're willing, you might, and I don't know your schedule, but I know that that could cause some problems for me in the fall with coaching and, and spring with coaching, so.
Board of Control meetings are the first Wednesday of each month.
Wednesdays aren't any better.
And they're typically in the evening, I think, aren't they?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, they do.
But at this point, that Board of Control is full, so.
And as the alternate, I mean, if, if we wanted to dedicate like someone going every month, we could share that role too, right? So I mean, I'm willing to help, you know, if it doesn't interfere with something else going on, so.
But traditionally, they're Monday nights, the regular season.
They had been in the past, but you just saw something different. I appreciate you stepping forward, so at this point.
They're on Wednesdays.
What's that?
They are on Wednesdays.
They are on Wednesdays, okay.
According to the schedule. I could potentially open on Wednesdays because Caitlin might be playing club volleyball time a lot again on Wednesdays, just saying. And they're already there, so we got this, Alicia.
Okay.
We should have a motion for an appointment.
All right, someone prepared to make a motion?
You want it? I'll make a motion to appoint Alicia as the CISA delegate and Stacy as the alternate.
Okay. A motion on the table, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion. Okay, motion by Michelle, second by Josh. Any other questions? Call to vote, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes five zero. Thank you everyone for the consideration and thank you Alicia and Stacy for stepping forward and filling that role. Which brings us to, I will look for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Motion by Alicia, second by Michelle, all those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Again, five zero. Thank you everyone.